Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices off or vibrate. Mr. Fuentes, would you please lead us in our prayer and our pledge this evening's sermon?
Lord, we thank you in front of the day that you have given us. You give me thanks for the much needed rain you have given us the last few days. We ask to heal and be with the sick, bless our country and our troops. And we say, uh, help us make the best decisions for the city of Bountiful. Amen. Praying. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the great standers, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. All right, can show approval of the minutes of the March 19, 2018 meeting. Everybody had time to review? No comments from the others?
I didn't see anything that needed to be...
Anyone else? No, everything's good? All right. Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. You will be given a two to three minute limit. And is anyone in the gallery that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, well, skip and move on. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on a complaint from Ms. Stella Gonzalez's office, 405 Ball Avenue, on the closing of Ball Avenue between South Fifth and South Sixth Streets. Ms. Stella?
Yes, um, I'm a Latin American citizen, uh, and I'm a citizen here in Bountiful. Born and raised here. Lived at that residence for, uh, 38 years. And on, I believe it was, um, let me see, I believe it was on March 16th, on my way home, I come to find out that the street going toward my house is blocked. Uh, that seemed, uh, unnormal for me. Uh, I was not aware of the closing. I was not notified either by mail or any other source. Uh, so, I got in contact with, uh, with some of the city, uh, wanting to, I mean, blocking that street. Uh, two gates that are, I truly understand to be two gates at the end of, uh, Fifth Street and Sixth Street. Um, uh, my concern is that it's the route, uh, people will see on the, uh, there's a, I live on the Blue House, on the Blue Bottom Home. And right there where it has 405 Ball Street, there was a deadened road, so it's just cursed. Now, those, uh, Fourth Street and Fifth Street were considered what I call trails. Uh, I got with, uh, the city. I went to take a tour down there. Um, also, I, I understand that there's an ordinance in place. Um, and I am here to see if we can have that street open, uh, and have, uh, the project, uh, maybe the gates be relocated instead of having it right there in between those, the end of Fifth and Sixth. Um, uh, also, uh, let's see, uh, um, uh, if you'll look, show me another picture. If you'll see one of the pictures, this is where I drove up to, coming down Sixth Street. That's where I drove up to, not knowing or anything. And if you'll keep, continue just going. Okay, that is, okay, this is, after the, after that, this is the morning of 20th, uh, of the 20th, in the rain. This is what it does between Fifth and Sixth Street. Okay, uh, the trails between Fourth and Fifth, those are trails. Those are not what I call streets. If you'll keep flipping, there's also right there. I ended up, uh, somebody had left the, I completely didn't open it. On Fifth Street, that blockage or whatever it was, they left it open, which I was able to find a drive-through there because I couldn't drive through Fourth or through Fifth. Now, they had, uh, the trail on Fifth Street with just pictures of it also. This right here, see where it was left open? I went ahead and decided just to drive through there because there was no other way from my house because it gets so muddy, it gets so, it's so sluggish. Now, they had widened that Fifth Street, they have, it was just one car could drive in it, towards my house. So, the city did go down there and made it like a two-way. And put Calici on there, uh, which made it very sluggish for the following day. Uh, they fixed it one day, then it ran, so it got very sluggish. So, I had no choice but to drive through there. Now, uh, behind my house, uh, they considered that had the routes to my house. Those are not usable. Davis Street is the one behind, uh, Ball Street, and that one needs a lot of work because there's no way to go through there. So, in, in order for me to get to work, it's either, uh, take my routine route, which is this one, or slip and slide and maybe get stuck on 425. Uh, go ahead, uh, right there. This one right here is the Fifth Street that they fixed, uh, and that's how, how sluggish it got to where I have a, a, a small car where I was even fearful of getting stuck. So, uh, I took a picture of it. Okay, come to the next one. That's the same one. That, that right there, okay, that right there, if you'll see right there on the dark area right there, right in front of that blockage, there's a little bit of asphalt. I don't know what you call it or whatever, which when the city goes down there, uh, to work on it, um, there's a little bit of maybe kind of pavement or kind of something that we can go through there while we have the music. And I believe that that was, uh, put there so their machinery can not get stuck over there. Okay? Now, also in the minutes, I also listened to the minutes of, uh, February and the fifth minutes, and, uh, um, they, there was mention that how many people live out there. Okay, there's not very many people that live out there. Okay, but those that do, I mean, we pay taxes, we pay street fees, and in 38 years, uh, we have not had paved roads, we have not had, uh, access to, uh, even signs on the roads. Okay? So, we don't have any signs. We've also, uh, I've also, uh, for safety, they also said that it was for safety of the citizens. Uh, I believe that when I, uh, me and my husband were sitting on the sofa, and there's an ambulance driving around trying to find where they were supposed to go. So, there's no signs down there. So, if you'll flip it, you'll see one of the signs that's been very worn out. Right there, this is, okay, this one, go ahead. Okay, this one here is Violet Quayle House. That's where this is headed to Alejandro's. That's where that's at. But you'll also see that, yes, they worked on it, and just like all streets, yes, they worked on it, but then it gets puddled again, or it gets broken, or whatever happens. So, that's the road I take to work. That's my blue home over there at the end. Uh, there's, someone lives right next door to me, over here on this side. And then there's another house right behind me, and then it's just the baseball field over there. This is the day after that sluggish part where people were driving through there. I don't know who it was. I went from seven to five o'clock. I don't know, but it made it all messy. So, that too, that's, uh, Fifth Street. That's the one that they, the city widened so I could use, so we could use. And if you'll, okay? This one right here is Fifth Street also. That's the day after the rain. This right here is what they call a street. This is a one-way trail from Fourth, uh, on Fourth Street going towards the, we used to be the dump area. That trail has been made, wasn't even, didn't even exist. This one was made when they started, when they started the shooting range out there, and the, the officers and whoever was shooting at the range made that little trail right there. Okay, so, that one didn't even used to exist. They used to end right there at the end where my road just went around that way. Ball Street to Fourth Street. So, this one didn't exist for years. And, uh, so this is our home, and right here, where they, I wouldn't even use this area. This, uh, right from my home, we used to just take off that way or out toward, to the city, we'd take off that, we wouldn't even use the Fourth Street. So, uh, the reason why we use it is because it's not considered to me a street as a trail. So, they had widened there for two roads, for two, for two cars right there, and that was done on, uh, I believe, maybe the 27th of March. Okay? Right here is, uh, also, this is before the city went in to make it a two-way. That's where it was the one-way. Okay? From Fourth, from, this is, uh, Ball Street is right, well, there's my house right there. Ball Street's right behind it, but that was, that was just one car accessible. So, to me, that was not a trail. Uh, that was, didn't exist either. In years, it didn't exist. All that was flat. Okay, so, the machinery and, uh, started making a trail, and, and there it is. Okay, so, but they have widened it. See, that's where it is, that's between Fourth and, Fourth and, uh, Fifth and Sixth. That's where they're, there's a little bit of paved area right there. So, that should be, to us, that's the safest way to get out when it rains, or that's a natural route out to the house toward Sixth Street and out to the city. Okay? And right there, that's just the end of Fifth Street right there. This right here, you'll see the sign right here on your right. You can't even read it. Uh, it's so old that, uh, it would be safe to replace it, uh, also, and we have no, no, no signs whatsoever in the other streets further that way. Okay, this is, I took a picture of it because I was, I had a choice that morning, the next morning, that is Fifth Street. How was I gonna get to work? I either took that street, or I took, uh, the one that's being closed, or closed, or whatever. It was either that or the other one. So, I chose the other. Okay? This is also where I'm driving to there with caution because it's so sluggish. And, uh, so, that was, that's mainly my concern. And also for this, and also, they talked about safety and, uh, uh, and, um, protecting the investment of the city. That I understand. Yes, people steal that dirt. Yes, they do. None of it's over there, anyway. But they do steal, they do take that dirt. I've seen several take it. And I understand the city wanting and kind of fencing that area to protect your investment, but also understand that our cars, our home is what I have invested in also these many years. And to protect my car from getting damaged as I'm trying to get out of my house. And this is, uh, this is all that I was here for, to see if we could maybe punch you terms on how to redo the gates because apparently there's two blocks. You know, why, uh, is there a certain reason why you can't make a gate around the, the other fencing area? And also, if there's money for piping and fencing, you know, we need signs and we need roads. So, um, so, um, let's see. And, uh, so, uh, the city does own the rest of the, some of the area. I do own my property. Uh, I do date the city for the cleanup that they do down there. It's just that, um, you know, I don't plan to go anywhere, so, uh, I'm asking with grace to consider redoing the gates so I can have access to, to go to work and, and, uh, and, uh, as a citizen. Because those that live out there, not just me, and I'm just not here just for me. I'm here for the rest of them because those, those people that do live out there, they are human beings and they do live it every day.
Is it routine for area homeowners to be notified when a project like this goes into place?
Yeah.
If I had known this, Stella, I wouldn't have voted for that closure. You live in my precinct. I'm embarrassed when I go down there. If I go south towards the four apartments, I can't even get down there to go to the streets. I ran the Allen Service for 25 years. I've had to just peel my way around that area because there's no signs. That was years ago. Nothing has changed. I want you to know upfront, if I had known this, I would not have voted for this project.
Anyone else?
Question? So, if this, I'm, I'm sorry, also, I didn't think about this, I didn't, I didn't know the situation, but could we possibly move the yard storage to the dump shooting around? There's plenty of room out there. I mean, would that be with your vehicles to get into that gate? I mean, why would that gate, it's for your vehicles.
At the, at the old landfill?
Well, where we shoot, the shooting range, you know, back in the back, it's wide open. There's trees.
Yeah.
I mean, and then that's our close-in.
Well, there's other areas.
It's an option.
That we own. This particular one, we own quite a large area.
Right, right. I understand why you picked this area, that's right there.
Yeah.
But in light of the, you know, what you bring up, yeah, we can relocate it to the big wide open area, the dump back there. I mean, this is, this is the bottom up back here, right?
On the...
Bottom, right?
Yeah. It's in that area.
I mean, there's quite a bit of room there. Just a thought. We can move it all out there and it's not blocking any of the roads.
Well, I have a question. What, what would be involved cost-wise to move that area you were talking about versus building a road that they can use to get in and out?
That we can redo those roads in that whole area.
With the east? They can get in and out with these.
Yeah.
Without having to worry about slipping and sliding and getting stuck.
Yeah.
So, we look at that.
Whatever y'all's desire is, we have no problem with it.
What's the cause difference in what we're putting in the, the road toppers versus just picking the dirt up, moving it?
Yes.
Or leaving it there till it's exhausted and start a new pile there as you get new deliveries, not moving things.
So, it's still just wide open, then, then any intention or anything?
Yeah. There's, the piles are, probably, that's all it's there.
Poles and some topless.
Yeah.
The ready cintures?
I know we've already voted for the closure. Cintures fence both sides of that street, the gated on both sides of the middle. You have your dirt over here, equipment over here, and let Stella have access to that road and other folks do.
Yeah, we could. The one problem you run into since over just half blocks, you get those eighteen-wheelers in there, get them turned around.
And the gates are big enough for them to turn around.
The side gate in there.
Once you have the material and you have...
Well, the one on the north side has houses. But I call it the north, I know the north. Now, the one on the south side, we own, I believe, two lots in that southeast corner. The southwest corner, we don't own. There's a house there and a lot needs to, that we don't own.
But ready layers didn't go out to these adjacent homeowners? Just to this project?
Do what?
Layers didn't go out?
No.
Because it'd been nice to shut up, could've done before.
They didn't go out. We brought it before the council. Told them what our desire was and y'all voted for it.
What's the next move, we, we vote? We rescind that last vote?
Send the ordinance if you want to do that.
It sounds like it would be such an active decision. You have to decide, I don't want to proceed. You want to take a look and discuss it later. I'd like you to, early open at the time being.
I think we need to have some time to look at it, discuss it, and see what...
See where the costs are.
See what's going to affect the city and even Stella and the neighbors. We need to meet their needs. We need to have a discussion, see where we need to go in order to make everything whole.
Yeah. In the meantime, we'll get that down the barricades, I guess, until...
Yeah.
Are the barricades not down yet?
One of them is, the other one's not. The other one has rocks on it.
I think we can remove those until we make some kind of...
They're standing there. They probably put rocks on it. But that road is, the road is not blocked with a pole or anything.
Right. Some figures, but...
And also, behind those, uh, lines, there is alleys that run through there. Come to this, two alleys. There's just street in the middle and then there's alleys.
Yeah, but the southern, the southern one, they didn't get into the alley where that red line is on the south side.
They left that open, right?
Yeah, that alley, but there's utilities in the alley, yes.
All right, that's all, sitting?
In the meantime, she can use that road, right there?
Yeah, that one will open up.
We just have to move it.
You okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the motion to postpone the action from Ms. Stella Gonzalez on closing 405 Ball Avenue between South Fifth and South Sixth Streets, please.
Good move.
Second?
Third.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you. You're welcome. Smile.
Thank you, Jesus.
All right. If y'all just want to hang out, if you want to fly out the door to the church, some people won't hang out, so. I'm just letting you go. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a, a NIBRS grant. Chief?
It's, uh, they call it a NIBRS grant. Normally, it's around seventy-five hundred dollars, um, for this NIBRS management system. Basically, we have to pay, um, topsy, the incident management system. We use, they pay NIBRS, um, to keep up with the security of everything. Last year, we were not able to get the grant. I did not get it in time. This year I did. Deadline was today, actually. So, we just need to prove that we can do this and, uh, we get it uploaded, and it's about seventy-five hundred dollars, um, to pay out.
This comes directly from Governor's Office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, they grant, they grant through Governor's Office, and, um, we should know for example whether it's a yes or no. Normally, it's a yes. They don't, they never had anybody pick that one up, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions about it? No? All right. Motion to take action on a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for an NIBRS grant, please. Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Mr. Rick, he was too fast. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on the request from Mr. Bobby Jones for inquiries and information on the qualifications for the school operator to help.
Mr. Jones? About four months ago, Mr. Bryant, and he made a commitment to post the, uh, the contract this April. And I was wondering if the city manager was going to follow up on that commitment to make that posting of the contract?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Adapt that in the paper.
All right, you had a question, ma'am?
At the end of this month.
At the end of this month? Okay. I appreciate that, sir. Now, where can I pick up bids?
Uh, application, and we'll be here at the city hall.
Okay.
You can see one of the ladies that are normally out front or beneath her.
Okay, so it says go post end of month, or should be May when you can pick them up?
Uh, first of May.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? That's it? That's like that?
I'm ending. This says this is an annual contract that didn't come up last summer.
You can pick on him for Brian. That is true. And it's going to continue.
So, I have in my pack this RMS service. No date, no letterhead, no signature. Eleven thousand five hundred dollars a year. Somebody goes to a two-day school, they get certified as a school operator, and they get eleven thousand five hundred dollars a year. My understanding, that is going to sound out. Am I right?
Yeah.
I consider that a brooch of ethics. I consider it dishonorable. I consider it shameful. I think that money should be given to a city employee in the park that's probably doing most of the work anyway. And I question the legality of this. And the people who voted for it, they ought to be ashamed of themselves. And the person who's taking it should be ashamed of themselves. So, I hope, Bobby, that somebody else gets this contract.
Well, actually, I would like to see it for, for public, uh, public viewing and, uh, and other interested parties be able to, uh, bid on it in a competitive manner.
So, Pat, I would ask you about the legality. All right? But I'd also like to point at page forty-five in our book. It says, "No official in the city, no employee in the city will enter into contract with the city either directly or indirectly. It is illegal according to our charter." Am I right or wrong?
The best part of the charter does say that. I know, when I talked to Brian about this before, a long time ago, um, Brian, I had talked to TML, which is the, uh, organization for cities, and I think whatever they discuss, TML's trying to do it, but I don't know, I don't know if he knew about this charter provision or not. I never heard about the charter provision, and so I became...
Does the charter provision prevent this?
Yes.
Thank you. And since it's been a violation of the charter from day one, should this individual reimburse all that money to the city?
And it was done in a good manner. I think if it was done in, uh, in good faith, I think as long as we've gotten service, I think we just don't do it again. That would be my thing. You know, how long would it transpire? Two years ago, or however long it's been.
Well, it's been a thorn in my side. I'm not supposed to be on the council. I'm supposed to be walled off and all that good stuff. When I talked to Brian about it, he would say his usual phraseology, "Well, the optics aren't good, Bob. The optics aren't good, and it's the juice worth the squeeze." So, I kind of get tired, got tired hearing that, and one day he said, "Well, what is it gonna take to make you happy?" And I said, "Well, it's one thing, let's start with this." And he said, "No, I can't do that. I can't take that money away." Anyway, thank the citizens for getting gouged a bit. I'd rather that money be given to the city employees. Or a city employee.
I think that's the intent, is to go after data and get the best software we can.
Anyway, that's the way I feel, and I'm sticking to it.
All right, moving along. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on adopting an economic development program pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. And I believe Mr. Tesser has some information on this.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in your pocket is a resolution that, um, what is it? Is it in our pocket? No, I'm not sure.
You have it in your pocket?
Well, I understand, but I guess it isn't given in fact. I don't have the resolution. So, I guess we'll need to work on that move. But what it is, is just to tell you about what it is, and that way, um, what, what a Chapter 30 program is, and I talked with the mayor about it, it's something that cities can often utilize to bring businesses to town, or help the business, basically promote economic development in the city. I think it's a good thing. For example, what we did right now last week in Brownville, we have a Chapter 30 program adopted. The first thing you have to do to do 380, a Chapter 30 program, is to adopt the program. It's not a very, it's a one-page resolution that recites the fact that we want to promote economic development in the city. And what we did is we had an old building that was, been sitting there for about 40 years, and we essentially gave it to a developer who's gonna build a business there. I mean, it's been sitting there, getting no taxes, and now it's gonna be developed. We don't know what yet, but it looks like it might be a good business. And, uh, and so, that's the kind of, ordinarily, a city under the law, unless you adopt a Chapter 30 program, you have to sell it for fair market value. And if the property had a appraisal listed value of about $1,000, it's more than you're worth that. So, we could have a gift of $1,000. So, we could have a bid for one thousand dollars, but we tried to sell it for twenty years. And so, that's what Chapter 380 does, it gives you some flexibility in being able to craft things for your citizens in your city to promote economic development, whatever it's not. Whether it's land that you can donate, or services you might provide, it's whatever your creative mind can come up with. You can do things like tax abatements and things like that, to do those on occasion, but whatever. But ultimately, it's just to get anything for your money. And so, anyway, I'll give you that, and I'll sure we get the resolution for the next meeting, but that's kinda what it's about. So, I didn't caution you to adopt it, and since, you know, I'll be able to do any projects. Ultimately, even when a citizen or somebody's got an idea, or you got a piece of property you wanna adopt, it just gives you the market more effective and easier, and get it out of your hands easier. So, it's something most cities try to adopt, or look at, if this is, it's a way your city can grow and survive, is to continue to promote businesses in the community. And that's the idea behind it.
How does it compare to the O M A D?
Yeah, you know, it's basically, the difference is, is behind, what the mayor's asking about is, is that you can do a, under state law, you can adopt, if you have a room under your tax rate, an economic development tax. And that can be up to half cent for each of the, you can either have a type A, or a type B, or both, if you've got a room under your tax base. The difference is, is that those, if you talk, for example, a type B EDC is basically can do just about any project you want to. It's still not as broad as a Chapter 380 program. The only advantage of a type B is if you can get that tax attached to it, because then you can utilize it for those projects, instead of using city funds. That's the advantage of the tax. And I know, I'm gonna look at and see about that for us, as far as, we better be get that type B tax. Type B is a more appropriate. Type As are limited to manufacturing and industrial type projects, where type Bs can do, can do manufacturing industrial, they also do retail, they can do projects. So, they can do a lot of things for your community. And that's, we are, our type, we got a type A, but we actually had an election. A type A can do type B, they did an election. And so, what we have is, that's how we don't have all parts in our city, Brownsville, was with this hat. So, it has a lot of advantages. It's, it's a way for you to build your city. And this is, this is a way, again, you're not obligated to do a Chapter 380 program, just if you have the opportunity, it can afford you, it gives you the flexibility. But it's essentially, cities are prohibited by law from making donations. And what I mean by that is, is that you can make a donation, so to speak, to a nonprofit entity, for example, if they're supporting a public fund, if you find that. An example would be, say, Senior Citizens Center operated by a nonprofit, you can give money to them for a, promote a public purpose, which is to help senior citizens. So, that's the kind of donation you can make ordinarily. But otherwise, if it's a business, you couldn't make a donation unless you have this kind of Chapter 380 program. And so, that's what gives you the ability to, to basically use city funds, resources to promote economic development. This is the only way really, a city can adopt it, with that type B tax or type C tax. So, so this is kind of like the first step, and y'all are in it, everything y'all wanna do down the road. But I'll have the resolution and wait for the next meeting.
Can you go print it off?
Yeah. And that's, if it's on the council, we'll try and manage, we'll do it, it's a very simple resolution.
One page, two pages?
One page.
Okay, she's gonna get that, we're just gonna go ahead and move to the next, and come back to Agenda Eight. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on amending the contract fees for lease airport hangars, and I believe you did have both of those in your packet. And Mr. Teschler, you going to comment on that as well?
Sure. I gave you a red wine version, the shovelift, and all the other stuff, and left me, I had an opportunity to look through those. I think I touched on all of them, we talked about. Something Mr. Jones mentioned, the lighting special hanger on page two. About that and there, we clarified, what we discussed on page three, which was the storage, the fuel, and aviation water eliminated, the building store fuel, and clarified the free equipment, the whole items of aviation element. Except the typo down here on paragraph three. And that's it. Make the same changes on both of them. I think that should be ready for that.
Need by having any other questions? The comments concerning lease agreements for airports?
No, I think the code, everything that you.
What about the fees, Mayor? Are you seeing anything new around the fees?
That, I did, I don't know, because I thought we had already done that the last week. I believe we had already done that.
It's a theory.
And we did the modification.
I'm thinking about the next year or something like that. I remember, right?
So, that should have already been done previous.
They've done, um, we did the proper changes.
So, we didn't vote on it because of the changes to the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, and we've been corrected. That new sheet tells. All right, Mr. Everett, you had some fees that you wanted to.
Yeah, the reg, the ag fee, we're gonna keep the same, three fifty a month.
Okay.
And the tea hangers, and the hanger space, and the old hanger, the same, we've got about four planes that stay in the east end of that old original hanger. They would be a hundred dollars a month.
Which we're currently at sixty?
Sixty-five.
So, we're going from sixty-five to a hundred?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? All right. We did look at it, but she's saying we didn't vote on it. So, it's okay. All right, motion to accept the new contracts for the lease agreements to the airport hangers, including the changes of the fees from sixty-five to a hundred dollars, and leaving the agriculture at the three fifty a month.
Should move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Pat. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, oh, wait, wait, wait. We didn't get back to the Chapter 380, I thought jumped over it. She did make a copy of it and handed it to us, and that is basically it.
Yes, Mayor, a few, basically, very simple, this issue all will add to under Chapter 380 program. And basically, what it says is, "Chapter 380 was set up to facilitate and diversify economic development and redevelopment within the city. The sound broken city would minimize conditions of economic block, which poses danger to public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Reduce unemployment, include and reverse crime based revenue to the city, and improve the quality of life for all its residents. To accomplish these goals, the city hereby adopts and establishes the following programs and economic incentives. You can add, you can give add-on tax abatement, which we would have to adopt specific policies if we're actually doing that, which we can do at any time. Reinvestment zone incentives, which are certain areas that meet criteria for reinvestment zones. There are certain benefits you can give if you're in a reinvestment zone. Silent enterprise zones. Then you can give loans, grants, assistance, and contracts that provided in Chapter 380. And any other programs and incentives that we would wanna see fit and establish in the future." And this basically, this, Chapter 380 is essentially a chapter in the Local Government Code, which basically allows cities to develop and promote economic development. So, that's what we've done, we've just decided to adopt it under our city, provide it, and that's what's happening. We can ever, we're Chapter 380, or assistance, or something like that. So, this is the first step, just to have it in place if we ever have any economic development opportunities. And I think it's a good thing, and as we go forward and look at the type B, EDC tax, you know, it'd be great, I think, for the council to have, you know, kind of a committee forum to look at economic development, and kind of direction y'all wanna look at, and for all the cities, right, it's a great idea.
Look, so we didn't obligate you to do anything, it's just gives you the ability, so they can fire or use our delay. And you have to file this? You filed this?
No, just blow, keep it in the, just work it, and say, you're gonna adopt the resolution and say, ooh, that's it. And you're right.
Everybody have any questions about it? Positive, negative?
Is it like the tax abatement?
It could be, that's one of the things that you allow to do under. And it's not something you have to do. You can also do, what we've done a lot more is, like, sales tax rebates, which are another way you can get businesses to come in. You can do act one, rebates, you can do them in different ways that you couldn't do, it's not just tax abatement. Tax abatement is somebody builds something, and the statute says you can, basically, forbear the taxes for a period of about ten years. You can do sales tax rebates under Chapter 380, which are a little different. And it's just gives you all those, all those different methods to basically recruit businesses to come to your city. And it's kind of what about every city nowadays, businesses especially, looking to expand, they're always looking for businesses to come. Just gives you another tool in your arsenal to try and grow the city.
And you guys on the council years ago, I think my buddies came in, it's kind of that type thing we give tax like, and that's one of the things that got up here.
All right, motion to adopt an economic development program pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. Two minutes. Second? All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you, thank you. We are going to skip Agenda Item Ten. We have paperwork that needs to be given to us, so that's gonna be processed momentarily. Then we move down to Agenda Eleven, Consider Approval of Building Permits. I believe we should have three.
So, over there, by the way, I got one north way up, want to build a fifteen by seventy by fourteen foot, on and over, Egyptian trailer. Rudy Amaro, want to build a new porch, twenty by, twenty by eight foot porch, at the Four Kingdom Ford Road Avenue. And Sal, ran it up, area six seven, if you want to build a fifteen by ten, put a carp pole. Everything should be, yeah, everything's fine. I don't see any problems at all.
Make the motion, we are approving that. All in favor, say aye.
Thank y'all.
All right, Police, so, the police chief has instructed me that judge is out this week, we're not able to get the report, they only get to us through the system. So, we're going to skip over to Agenda Twelve, and move on to Agenda thirteen, where we will hear the City Administrator's private report, please.
Just bringing up today on a few of the activities that's been going on with the city crew. They finished basically working out at the lake, we got the lake park back open, all the repairs have been made. We did find out today that there's a problem with the North Ronald's meter. North Ronald supplies water at the lake. They had a, you have a valve, and you have a flange that connects to a meter. Well, there's a hundred and eighty pound of pressure on that line, and that pressure has blown out that rubber on their side. And in turn, that water's gone through the meter, and it's blown out the valve on, or the rubber on our side, so they're in the process of getting that fixed. But everything's ready to go in the park, no problem. Scott and I have been discussing street paving for the summit, trying to get things gathered up, how many blocks we can do. Around that, looks like maybe ten to twelve blocks that we're both exploring.
Just stay long, I believe.
We had talked about that. But we've been talking about material prices, hauling, so forth. We've hired three new employees in the street department over the last three months, two of them came to work this morning. We do have another CDL driver, which we've been missing, so.
What about the water?
The water plant, we haven't found the new employees.
It's sort of the same.
Yeah, those don't grow on trees.
He's also a good man.
Yeah. But Benita has gotten ads in TML and Texas Water Utilities Bureau, so the process has begun. I do have a young man coming Wednesday morning to kind of show it out, he's a rookie, has no license, could be another trainee. But currently, we're two fifty short. But we're still making more.
Counting you?
Counting me.
So, you have three?
No, we have two.
No, but traditionally, you have three.
Traditionally, we have four, but we've been operating with just three about the last five years.
Okay.
We're getting brought in. Anyway, that's about it.
Well, we are basically looking for another licensed operator.
Licensed operator. We would take, we would take one licensed operator, and maybe a trainee. But we definitely didn't need another licensed operator. It takes, normally, it takes about four years to get a trainee, but then we can turn with.
Randy, when you're there, be all, all the kids up.
Right now, of course, somebody has to be there, on call twenty-four seven. On the weekends right now, Ryan and I are rotating weekends, I worked this past weekend, so.
But when you have four there, you occasionally get weekends, you have four.
Mm-hmm. Just make it easy on them.
Right, right.
Anyway, that's about it. Any more questions?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. All right, we're gonna go back to Agenda Ten. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on bids received for the sale of two city lots located at eight oh five North Thirteenth Street and nine ten North Twelfth Street. And is this the envelope?
Yeah, we got one bid.
One bid? I'll let you have it.
Your number is?
My number is one. Does one bid for both of them?
Uh, this is Mary Davis. I'd like to submit a bid to purchase the lot located at eight oh five Thirteenth Street. Legal description of the lot is Lot Three, Block Two of the Powell Edition. I submit a bid of four hundred dollars, Mary Davis, Madonna Texas. So, we have.
Only one?
Yes.
Randy, you don't know the appraisal on that lot?
No, I don't.
That one's on Thirteenth. The last one you saw right there on Thirteenth, down the road from this one? On the corner near the bridge?
He paid a thousand dollars.
He paid a thousand, okay. I didn't hand you two. Well, it's only bid, so it's yours to call whether you accept it or don't accept it.
Tax appraisal's nine hundred on it.
Thank you.
You want it?
Nine hundred. I mean, it doesn't mean what it, that's what it's worth, but that's what it's assessed, huh? I mean, it's a tax assessment.
At least it has a number to go with it. Thank you. Thank you.
What's the benefit of the state of your roof? I mean, maintain this lot pretty regularly or?
Any of the lots that are in town that we have, we maintain. And so there's maintenance.
It's all the year long, I think. Yeah. It's not doing anything to your roof. So it wasn't one.
How do you feel about this, Steve?
I think it's a little low.
I do. That's kind of what I think.
That's two, do you want to go?
I'm okay with it. Not too boring.
What do you think, Rick?
So we had a call, I made a little, we're not, we don't have a lot of cost maintaining up to that thing.
Basically, moving.
Well, obviously, they're wanting to purchase the lot. I'm going to surmise they have some kind of plan for it.
Most of the ones I have, I've done sections.
It may need to, I manage to accept the bid so far.
Is that the general consensus, accept the bid?
Come on, Ford. I was hoping somebody had it and wants it. It has a little low, but. Yeah.
We got one bid.
Sure.
Not hot in my area.
All right, motion to accept the bid received for the sale of the lot located at 805 North Thirteenth Street for four hundred dollars.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me? All right.
At least you move, you keep looking.
Thanks, sir. Put it back on the tack room. All right, here are requests for future Agenda Items from city councils. Anything else that needs to be on the agenda, please? Because everybody talks points every time.
If y'all don't have anything, I do have something here that we need to look at.
Okay.
In the, here, for the summary, we need to look at upgrading our building code. All of them. And a couple that we, we need to adopt that was never adopted, that's never been adopted. And so we really need to look at those. You know, currently, we have a O-three building, an international building code.
Correct.
O-six plumbing code, and O-five national electric code. We need to look at international property maintenance and international residential. They've never been adopted into the city. So it's kind of something that y'all will talk about. We need to look at in the near future.
You going to have some to present next meeting?
I can, I can add. I've got a good Steve. I've done a, I know we just updated ours. Some of those are announced, I've not been told, but we're going to force them in.
Okay.
We could get it out for y'all.
Anybody have a thought?
Do the newer versions of 2015 or?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think they, they brought out new versions about three years earlier.
I don't get, you know, I think just getting 2015, that's what we just.
Yeah, we go fifteen and we do.
We could hold a very three.
Yeah.
At least have some updates in. All right, we do. Thank you, Mr. Steve. All right, boundary city council should be in executive sessions authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation and city attorney update on all furniture water products. Thank you all very much, have a good evening.